Six thirty-five. At six thirty-five, little machine, and we'll start as always with our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of Benaki people who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. Um, oh, and here's Linda. Hey, that was great. Shall we?
Want me to scoot down? Well, mostly the.
Bring all the things.
Turning coins.
Great. It's an interesting thing. But they were good. Anyway, let's get going with the NRCS updates, please.
Okay, I've got some updates from Olivia. She did said she didn't have too much. Um, but she does have half a page that I can read to you. Um, so. We have all but one of the RCPP applications obligated. Okay, that was a true statement, but not what Olivia wrote. And it, that one did get approved, or they told me that it was sent up. Um, and it looks like that one's gonna go good because of the quality of Vermont's RCPP work. They actually decided on the national level that they don't need to review is review ours as heavily. If it makes it through the state review process, then it's good. Um, which is a neat thing for that one. Um, we've got three out of the four CSP applications obligated. The last ones for uh, wood, uh, a wood, a forestry contract. We are transitioning to equip for most of our work, trying to get that obligated. So in other words, we're still obligating contracts at this point. Our deadlines have been pushed back by about a month and a half of the original anticipated deadline, if not two months. Um, right now, we've got trainings. There's a reptile and amphibian training on May sixteenth. And a grassland bird training on May twenty-first. Because NRCS isn't allowed to spend any money on these trainings, they have to be all internal and they all have to be free sites. Um, which means. Outside of that being said, that we are supposed to have a training on those days. We know no actual information about where it will be. Today, we had a training move from Middlebury to Fairfield, Vermont, so. Um, it was just a little bit of a hike. We. Will be training on the sixteen nineteen program for partners and NRCS staff. Waiting on leadership to plan the training date. Uh, Jacob Clay is looking to see who will still need cultural resources training part two. So I don't know if May or Heather need those, um, but I know we've talked about that. The local fund pool, the guidance is taken from appendix A. Um, saying that May sixteenth, the ASTCFO ensures, which I believe is Flixia. Ensures the locally led fund. Um, ensures that they lo- final local leads have been submitted. And then on May thirtieth, the decisions will be made or pending allocations. To submit the final local working group feedback from the state office, to the state office. Hopefully, that made more sense to the people who are actually doing the local work group. That's an update that's outside of my. Purview. I don't think I have any other updates, other than the fact that I'll be on leave for a lot of the next two weeks, just throwing that out there.
Where are you going, Emma?
I'm going to Northern Indiana for a wedding this weekend and we're leaving at midnight tomorrow because I'm driving with my cousin, who apparently doesn't sleep. So I'm excited to see how that goes. And then my parents are coming the next week. Um, they've said I don't need to take off any work for it, but they also won't tell me any of their plans, so.
You don't need to take off work because they're not actually gonna visit you. Enjoy your time away or off.
Yeah, she wanted to be told when she was allowed to leave. I was gonna say she's gonna say at the end.
I'll do it. I'm just winding yarn.
Whenever you're all set, Emma, we're all set. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I'll take his. I need a double. Um, not a D. Uh, let's see. Okay. Hi, May. Who else do we have? Good to have some sense there. We are being recorded. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Quarter three. Financial topic.
Okay. I'm gonna mess this up. I want Steve to.
What are you trying to do?
Zoom has an act for putting the toolbar right where I'm trying to click. I'm gonna vanish him when I try to move it. There it is. I did not drag. No, we did. And then it got huge. Is exceeding the capacity of this technology for me?
We'll undo it. Well, because it's like not fully on the.
So, um, the documents that are included in the board packet are, um, so this is quarter three. So that's January one to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, which is confusing because that's quarter one in the calendar year, but it's quarter three in our fiscal year. Um, so the documents that are included in here for our policies are the budget actual. Um, uh, balance sheet standard and the profit and loss by class. Um, and then our policies say that we'll also do a balance sheet detail, which is, I don't know, maybe seventy pages. So I did email that to everybody on the board so that you have it, um, but I didn't put it in the packet, just for the sake of a tree.
Would have been a whole trio, that's.
And should any of our general public inter attending or whatever want access to it, they could contact you.
And I could put it on the website if that's, if we think that's a good idea. There's not gonna be any way. Everything we do is. So always good to remember that. Um, so I guess the takeaway is. I want to just scroll a little bit. It wants to do that.
We can drag a little.
Yeah. Yeah, I have this. I have this as a spreadsheet and that would be easier. Those inviting videos. Okay. So, um, quarter three, we had a hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents in total income. Which puts us at. Four hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the fiscal year. Um, so we're right about on track in terms of percentage of the way through, um, to our budgeted amount of six twenty-seven. That said, we have a couple of large payments that have been paid that we won't be paid in quarter four by those funders. So I think we'll probably come in under a little bit on revenue, but I think we'll also come in under on expenses. And then expenses. We had eighty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighteen cents in of expenses in that quarter, so we were actually forty-five thousand in the black. And I think that sort of ties back to, um, egg seaweed, which pays us semi-annually. And that's right there. Forty-nine thousand three seventy-eight, that won't pay us in quarter four. So sort of, we have money on hand that we use to pay expenses related to that program, which is mostly salary for other in May. Quarter four. Um, so we're not as far on the block as it looks. With this document, I guess. Um, other than that, um, I don't see any like huge things that stood out to me as unusual. Um, Vermont Community Foundation, that's a, I think it's an eighteen months award. Is the full amount, and so I only budgeted for twelve months of it, but they went ahead and paid us the whole thing. Um, so we already have all those funds. We haven't got more funds until about a year and it's up sometime halfway through twenty twenty. Fiscally for twenty twenty-six.
It must be the challenge with those kinds of situations is not spending money that.
Yeah.
Need for something else.
Yeah.
And. End up not getting the money. For instance, for Heather's salary. If you use this with Heather or something, but it's meant for Isabel in the future, then.
Right.
They can fight enough.
And there's always a bit of. You know. Borrowing from one, borrowing, like it, it's, it's not an exact science. So I do a couple of things. I maintain a cash flow forecast that focuses on can we make our bills and try to project that out a couple of months out of time. And that's separate from this and much more of the like grant by grant thing. Now, the correct way to do it would be when we get a grant that pays us all the money upfront, we should be reflecting that as a liability on our books. We're not doing that because I don't wanna do that. That's the sort of thing that structural integrity, that's the CPA firm that's gonna work with us. Um, that's the thing, that's the sort of thing they're gonna help us work on. It's like, how do we get our books to be just like a little bit more by the book? Yeah. Um, so that, you know, my, my concern is always is a funders, like, hey, I wanna see an item I've spread down with these expenses. They, they have the right to ask for that. We would have a difficult time providing them with something that totally agreed with what we had endorsed them for. That comes back to like billable rate and how it's reflected in all of our categories, grant classes. So the one sound. Yeah, I had that in for quite a bit. Yep. Anticipated income and it doesn't look like that's coming. Um, so there have been a couple of challenges with that grant. One is just a lack of engagement from some of our partners that we work with on it. Um, the plan was to sub-grant out a lot of this money to other conservation districts, kind of the conservancy, NOFA. Um, Connecticut Russian Farmers Alliance, um, Connecticut River Joint Commission. We had a long list of partners that we, and some have outright said they didn't wanna do the project. Others are participating in the project, but have limited capacity. So when we say here, you're gonna thirty thousand dollars to like really do this work, they, they don't have staff that can take on thirty thousand dollars worth of work. So we're, we're just, we're continuing to run away the low projections. The good news is it's been revenue and expense are down. Um, when we get to the draft budget, I'm, I'm sort of proposing that I think that we should spend more of that money ourselves next year since we have it. Um, which means we'll just do more of the work ourselves and, and lean on them less. Because we're kind of getting to the point in that project where we need to, this thing's gotta go. We've, they told us we would be able to get an extension. They said, don't ask for it until the end, but yes, you'll be able to have one as long as you're not asking for more money. Basically, we don't really care if you need another year, but the, the parent funds expire in twenty twenty-seven, so that's really the hard stop. So we're kind of down to two years and, um, and soon Isabel will need to start writing the second QOP. Because the project needs two quality assurance project plans. One was related to the surveys and interviews. The second's related to the field test that we hope to do, highlighting some of these practices. Um, that's gonna be a big job.
Already done one when I knew nothing, so now I know things.
I mean, but I would expect a lot of staff. Well, that's, I know, and as well raise that concern is like, will it be harder or? Or not with some of the changes to the government, because the DPA that signs off on the QOP and maybe there won't be anyone there to.
Sign up.
Well, even.
Or.
That is, is communicating, having discussions with them on, okay, this is what we wanna do. It's, uh, uh, basically you go back and forth to then agree on it. I didn't just write it and send it. So, um, no one's there to help me.
We'll cross that bridge and come do it. Um, but that's a good question. Um. Other questions? I, I don't know if I wanna go by.
The plant sale, is that a concern?
That's only, so there's quite a bit of payments in quarter four. Of course, it starts April one.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we ended up.
Yeah, okay.
Very close to forty-two thousand. Yeah.
I thought we packed plenty of orders.
Can you remind me what, uh, is under other contractual? We have a hundred and twelve thousand there and we spent twenty-three. Yeah, so that's, that's mostly the stuff. Yeah, so it's the only things that are contractual that don't go under other contractual are engineering services or construction. And so the only, we have, uh, Fitzgerald and Brownell Associates work on, um, the Jacksonville burn removal for culinary design. And, uh, their work on the, on the, um. Dummerston Covered Bridge infiltration steps, design work, um, is under there. And, um, DuBois and King's work on Lake Raponda shoreline erosion control. The design engineering work is on there. And then, oh, and then Slayer Rock Timber's work, the Dummerston Bridge's construction would be under construction, but then all the rest of the contractual work is there. And that includes, um, any money, I think we haven't spent yet this year, but we have money in the budget to contract with Mike Bald again for Silgrass. Um, so that goes under other contractual because we don't have a category for that kind of service. Other questions on the budget actual? Everything else is a PDF, but at least I can do them one at a time, so. Balance sheet standard. This is always a kind of. I'm sorry.
I'm wondering about the contractual, the consulting stroke engineering. So, because that's, you had fourteen thousand budgeted. And then spending the second quarter was twenty-one.
Yeah, so there are a couple of things. There was, the, we thought we were gonna finish the Dummerston Bridge project in FY twenty-four. And then we only got about halfway installed, and so some of the invoices fell into FY twenty-five, but I don't think we ever updated the budget. And then I think the Jacksonville burn project was added after we had a budget. So there are just a couple of projects, so there should be more revenue and. More expense, but they should balance out.
Right, when, when, when the priorities added off your budget. Uh, May, shouldn't we, shouldn't we modify the budget?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Agreed. Um, so this is balance sheet. Um, as of March three versus the end of quarter three, um, and it's actually nice to see this, there's so much of this money was, um, this is a cruel. So it means, doesn't matter if we have the cash or not yet, we, we built for it or owed it. And so it's fun to see that, in theory, we should have a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars at that, which we obviously didn't. Um, but we're, we're sort of feeling that now as all the payments have come in, so. And then I sent out the balance sheet detail, which goes transacting by transaction through it. Happy to answer questions about that. You can also reach out later if you have a chance to go through and have more questions. Questions on this?
The previous year cumulative net assets, that was like our balance on the end of it, I believe.
Yeah.
It's in theory is.
Yeah. I'm just curious, what is the?
Fifty-one.
Okay, that sounds about right to me. And well, what I'm learning, the thing I'm still trying to get a sense for, especially as we take on bigger projects, is how big that swing is of the gap between. When we incur a ton of expenses and have to pay them back later, get paid for them later.
Yeah.
And that, like, we built a bigger nest egg. I mean, we used to not have fifty-one thousand. Um, but we also are trying to operate much bigger programming. Our payroll is way more than it used to be.
Yeah.
So it is still a challenge. Any questions about the balance sheet? I'll be on some of the liability stuff in here. I don't feel like. That should just be things that would get paid in the next week or so. At least there was a payroll at the end of March, but then some of these things get paid in April, by April fifteenth. And then the other document is the profit and loss by class. So I, the one that's in the board packet, I just collapsed the columns. So instead of having fifty-some grant classes, it breaks them down into. Let's just, okay, so we're basically down into bigger categories. These are categories that NRCC uses, so we aligned ours to match theirs. Um, so the only thing that's unrestricted funds right now are, um, is bank interest. In theory, we can move plant sale revenue. Uh, plant sale profit could get moved into unrestricted funds, um, and then money held over from previous years, since it's off the books. Once it's not tied to a grant, could become unrestricted funds, and that's the sort of thing I'm hoping structural integrity will help us sort of. Clean up a little about accounting for some of those things. Um, but then administration, so that's our NRCC core services grant. And I think I put district manager rep under there too, because that's basically administrative in nature. Education programs or any of our grants that pay for us to do outreach and education. Um, but not agriculture, because that fits a thin category. Um, education programs also through, um, the, the planting, the tree and trout sales. Because I guess the argument is that we hope to be doing education to the public through those programs. And there've been some conversations that DM meetings about, that's kind of one of the ways we justify that we do this enormous undertaking is that it's not just. Selling trees, it's hopefully educating the public about invasive species and best parenting practices and all that jazz. Um, and then the other categories are natural resources conservation and restoration. So that's basically all the projects we do, like the Dummerston, you need cover bridge infiltration steps. Like upon a project, the Jacksonville burn removal, those types of projects go there, and then egg programs. So that's egg seaweed, which is outreach and education farmers and technical assistants. Um, the MACDTA grant, that's the one that, um, the funds flow through White River currently. Um, and AFT RCPP, which is conservation planning. Um, and then the only thing that's unclassified anymore is, oh, too fast. Um, is QuickBooks fees for the direct deposit. And I don't know how to move them, because when you do a journal entry, if you pull, if you try to pull up payroll expenses, that's not an option. So I don't know how to tell QuickBooks that I want them to go somewhere else. I think it's just sort of hardwareed into, because it's their fees for their software. Um, so yeah, I don't know how informative this is. I left the notes. So you can also collapse rows and then you get really broad categories, but in pursuit of transparency, I thought this was a little. Uh, transparent. Questions about any of this?
Lots of questions?
I guess a couple of.
I did just.
Yeah.
Up in the bank interest and I, you know, the balance that we have at Brattleboro Savings and Loan. Have we looked into any way to have that money earn more money while it's there?
Not much. That's the thing I've thought about.
I mean, I know we're not for profit, but.
Oh, we would like to have a main resource.
Right.
I think, uh, the key is having something that's really reliable. We can't. You know, we're like in the market.
Yeah, I know it's, it's tough, because even like. I think they and some banks have like checking accounts that pay more interest if you have a minimum balance, but. I don't know what those minimum balance.
Usually pretty low.
Um, you know, well, that's something to look at, whether they have a better checking account or. And, yeah, I don't know whether our checking account is just a regular person checking account. Or is, do we get a?
If we get some sort of special, I don't, I can't, I mean, that interest rate, consider how much money we have in there. That's gotta be next to zero, right?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a little bit, and very inhaled corporate banking in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Because we have money in both, but, um. Yeah, there's not much interest in just regular savings or checking accounts these days.
Um, yeah, it's definitely, I mentioned it to Josh Roberts one time, and he said, he's like, we could talk more about that, but then we just never followed up on it. Um, like, because he said, he was like, you know, I want to come meet with your board and like, it needs to be super clear what we're doing. Because he's like, we don't like to get into trouble with non-credit money, basically.
Yeah.
It's ugly past. We can't use it, so.
Right.
Unlimited. But it would be nice if we could generate something with it. Um, I guess the other thing I was just gonna mention that I guess I've done differently this year is I've been putting more stuff. Under administration, there's a, so if you look at the full profit and loss that I emailed you, it has sub-classes, lots and lots and lots of sub-classes. Um, one of them under administration says like non-staff administrative expenses. So that's all the stuff we pay for, we pay for every year that we need. Um, I've been putting more and more stuff there, and so like healthcare and the cash and more healthcare, retirement match. All those things are being put under sub-classes of administration. And the idea was that I think we can use it to calculate our billable rate or justify our available rate, because it's all in one place. I used to divvy it out across thirty grant classes, and that was a mess, and I don't think that helped anybody make sense of what this was. Attempting to communicate, um, but that's another thing that we're gonna definitely get into with the CPA is like, how should we be reporting this so that it's really clear?
Well, when you figure it out, I will be looking forward to having it explained to me. Because some of this makes my head spin.
Let's see Katie, but Katie, you got any questions?
Nope, so far. I'm good.
All right. New budget, next.
Do we do a, a motion? Uh, anyway, about the, about the financial reports? Uh, I actually don't remember. I feel like we have sometimes, but.
Hurt to just have a motion to accept.
Right. It's not.
Right.
Yeah.
Someone wants to make that motion.
So move.
Further discussion, questions, burning issues. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? A staple came undone, so none of my cases are awful good. Okay. So next on the agenda is draft fiscal year twenty-six budget. I can't, I feel like we just did a budget.
Um, so I'm not suggesting that we vote on this today. I think that there's a lot of information we'll get between now and June. Um, about some of these funding sources and where we'll actually be, but I thought it would be good to just look at it together and have some sense of where we're at. Um, this is the first year that I've put together a draft budget where like, we just, we have much more staff than we used to have. And staff are working their way up pay scales.
Right.
Which is good. We like that everyone's sticking around for sure, but it is definitely tighter in terms of. There have been times the bathroom, like, oh, we got fifteen thousand dollars, let's figure out where we wanna plug that. There have been times in the bathroom, like, oh, we got fifteen thousand dollars, let's figure out where we want to plug that into different categories, and it was not, it's done. Um, so this is very much an estimate, some of these grants we don't know about yet. Um, but projecting a total even seven hundred and eight thousand and change, which would be another jump more or this year. I'm projecting the same in expenses. Um, the biggest thing to me was that salaries and wages, almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a big jump, I think, by eighty five this year. And that's because we're adding the two invasive species technicians that are full-time for the whole summer. Last year, we had one person that was lately part-time, I'd say. Um, and, uh, we're adding the grassland bird person, we're adding the part-time administrative assistant. Um, and we have more breeder hours than we've ever had. Fortunately, that's funded. We have a grant from the state for that. Um, but it all adds up, so that is, that is a big number. There's a lot of estimating around, like, for example, um, other contractual, um, includes, there's some money in the grassland bird grant to be funded through subcontract to Cheshire Conservation District and Beachy NRCD to basically like open up this project. Um, but once again, we'll see what their real capacity is to do that. Um, and then there's some, obviously, the potential to fund a lot of money through the lineouts on futures fund. Um, project, but I didn't budget much just based on what we've learned in the past, because that sort of bit us in the past, where we were expecting to get the ten percent indirect on all that. And then because we didn't incur those expenses, we couldn't charge that indirect, so it did hurt our top line. Um, that financial assistance to producers is the gr- the grassland bird project. And so those would be FA agreements to farmers who implement delay mode. And that's also just a big estimate. Everything else, I kept numbers more or less consistent under expenses from what we had this year. Uh, I brought mileage down because I'm hoping that we're gonna get a vehicle. I mean, and then it does raise the question that we need, like, just regular old gas as a category.
Say that then, it doesn't go down.
It's, well, it is, no, it is cheaper though, because.
Oh, you're not paying the point.
Yeah. Mileage reimbursement in theory includes, uh, upkeep and maintenance of your vehicle and depreciation of your vehicle, although it doesn't typically cover the real costs of driving your own car. Um, but that's, so yeah, that probably needs to be added. Um. Just so you can see the things, this is most, this is, uh, refractance at meetings, grants a little pay for that, um, and it's the annual meeting. And the gathering, um. This is an estimate. If we're gonna have a vehicle, it'll cost more than it did in the past, so I raised it, but we'll be good to get a real quote and actually know what that's gonna cost. These are the, the, um, pretty own's report numbers.
Is, um, the auto something you can get through remotely, cities and towns, and are they cheaper or?
Um, I think it was, Derek got hers through them, and she was amazed at how cheap it was. So I'm hoping that's what we're gonna find too, but I reshuffled them a while ago. Questions about that and insurance in the shed, and they basically were like, when you have a vehicle in the shed, call us back and we'll get into it with you, but like, we don't like play hypotheticals. So I haven't gained any more information since then. So I do think we'll need insurance on the shed, if there's stuff in it that has value. Um, oh, and then I raised, I think this was a thousand last year, and then it was basically what people donated for the annual meeting. Um, I raised it to three with the, the hope that between the calendar sale, donations for the annual meeting and, um, the rest stop fundraiser, perhaps we could get to that number, but I'm, it's real stick. That's a pretty minor component of our budget, but it would just be nice to have a little more flexibility there. Um, the rest of these things, this we have an agreement for, they see what, um, basin planning, we still have, that's gonna be the number. Um, that they're putting a cap on it, which for us isn't a cut, but it just means it's not a, we asked for thirty. And then they said, well, we're gonna, across the board, nobody's getting more than that. Um, core services, we're pretty sure that it's gonna be level funded at this point inside of conference committee. Um, at that six twenty-five. fourteen districts, which is a little like this year, um, there are two hundred and fifty thousand in one-time funds that survived through the appropriate, through the conference committee work, so swinging the governor doesn't veto it, and th- this isn't what they fight about. Meg's kinda sad that like, it's a, this is such an afterthought on the size of the state budget that you guys are probably sail through without anybody paying attention to you. Um, but I did ask Claire on Friday what the thought was around the two hundred and fifty thousand. Obviously, that's a council decision, but she said that, I guess the internal discussions that are happening are that, um, they are talking about getting a CPA, like, for council that would then help districts, so we wouldn't have to pay for that service. Um, and then the rest, they would just add to our agreements. Instead of, because this year we applied for those funds and received very specific items, and sounds like they're, they're hoping to just supplement our income, so we may have more than that. But I don't wanna budget on it just yet in the process. I think we'll all buy June.
So there's no, um, and I, no, I read about this, but I don't remember much. Um, like last year, there was some thought that those funds should focus on making us compliant with open meeting law and that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Not been that kind of discussion.
Claire said that.
We haven't had a council meeting since.
Right, I was coming up soonish. Claire said, um, a year ago, they had told the legislature specifically, this is what we're doing with these funds when they asked for the funds, and so they felt like they really needed to comply. So this year, there's been no communication about what we're gonna do with the funds, so they feel like there's less requirement to be doing very specific things. Um, I just didn't, like, casual conversations with other DMs, a lot of districts feel like they're getting sort of the point where, like, we can comply with open meeting law. I mean, at this point, if you're a district, I'm not sure why you wouldn't have the tools that we have here, because you have a bunch of different grants go by in the last two years that have been targeted at this. And we were talking about that, you know, the tendency is to make up stuff that you need a little bit, because you don't wanna leave money on the table. But do we really need more belts and muscles, or do we just need money to meet our operating expense needs, especially as we worry about our fellow grants?
I just, I would imagine that as this all moves forward, though, the legislature would want some idea of how the money is spent or um, you know, that justifies them giving it to us again, potentially you're adding more to our budget, so.
Absolutely.
And I would hope that it will be done in some equitable or equal way, not I don't know, I get nervous when they start talking about doing things based on the needs of the districts or the size of the districts and stuff, because.
Yeah.
You know? If they really want every district, I'm probably preaching to the wrong choir here, but every district to have base abilities, then we all need the base tools funding and all that stuff.
I will share that, just in my record conversations with Claire, I've been feeling pessimistic about the impacts of federal fu- funding cuts, that those are gonna flow through the state at some point. But Claire did say, she's like, we feel like we're in the strongest position, we're positioned we've ever been in with the state government, like, but all the committees we testify in one of are fully in support of us now, like, they used to sort of be like, who are you guys? And then now they're like, no, we totally want to fund you guys, this is a priority. So she feels like, and she thinks that state stuff gets cut. That, I mean, if federal stuff gets cut, that the state's gonna be looking for, hey, who can pick up the pieces? And the districts, if we can get our act together, we can position ourselves really well to be like, we already do this work, give us more money to do it better and more.
Yeah, it's, they still have to find the money somewhere. But, I mean, that's very positive in a negative situation.
Right, right.
Um, you know, we've also heard similar thing about NRCS as they get
Right.
Fewer employees or whatever. They have looked in the past, at least, to districts to fill some of those gaps, but.
We've heard.
Whether they'll be able to do that or have even the funding to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it must be seen.
Yeah, we've already heard sort of off the record that, yes, absolutely, we're gonna, you know, the NRCS isn't gonna be able to meet their statutory obligations under the retaining, the amount of staff they've been able to hold on to.
Yeah.
And they're gonna need districts to do it. Um, and like, there's been some discussion at the Brattleboro level for the NRCS of like, wanting out, you know, a feeling like that needs to be talked about, and I have emphasized that, at least in the past, the way this has been handled is at the state level. That it's, it's Michelle and Travis talking. Um, I'm told that's not always the way it is in other states, sometimes it can be at the local level, so who knows? But I think that'd be something that maybe emphasize at council meeting is that these conversations need to be happening soon, so they won't plan. This is the last year on the SOGRAS agreement, or it will be by the end of the year, and who knows after that, but that's the rest of the funds there. Um, these, this is the new agreement that VACD holds for the NACD Technical Assistance Outreach Education. We feel pretty good about that. And that's, yeah, those are all of the governing sources we can project right now. Are there questions about any of this?
Uh, you haven't got town or Marmot in for benefit of the greedy program.
They didn't pay this year.
No, because the application went in too late.
Right.
So knowing that there's that rule, we should be able to get it in in time next year.
Okay.
And I don't think they had any objection in principle.
No, I think they were supportive. It won't change the total dollar amount, I don't think, because it, as an AHMCC said, if the town, town kicks in some, then they'll contribute less.
I think if you made a case, um, it's not a conflict to me, but it's the um, I, I'm treasured of that optimization team. Um, uh, I think if you made a case, um, uh, that they keep paying four thousand.
Okay.
I'm making some notes. Everybody agrees it's a good thing.
That's good.
That's what they like, yeah.
Anything else on the budget? Thank you, Corey. Um, so not, nothing, uh, formal on this at this point.
I don't think we, it should at this point, I don't even know a lot more than you.
Okay, truck acquisition.
Um, potential, so we have talked on and off about the need for a vehicle. We had funds in our budget this year to lease something. Although not nearly enough funds, I found out after I started shopping. Um, we really need something very, very soon, because, um, the water chestnut survey work, um, that field crew will need a vehicle and the ability to transport boats. We can't expect them to use their own vehicles for that. I don't think realistically, they probably even own the right vehicles for that. Um. So I reached out to Faith's Board and Toyota, um, in Westminster and had a meeting, exchanged a lot of emails, had a meeting with them, and they gave me some options which are in the board packet. Um, we looked to add a new F one fifty, a conventional. For, well, they gave me the purchase price, now so they gave me the lease price options. Um, one thing that I was guessing about was miles. I felt like we'd put twenty thousand on in a year. Does that seem?
Yeah.
Okay, um, but they don't typically do leases to that, but you can pay more to get a lease for that, but it does drive up the cost of the lease. So, um, if you look, if you look on page sixteen, this is the STX, yeah, so this is the conventional Ford F one fifty, um, crew cab, because there are at least four of us, so we're going to certain things together. I think it would make sense to be able to fit all of us. Um, and then you can see, if you put down fifteen hundred, it brings down the lease price a little bit. If you put down three thousand, it brings down the lease price a little bit. But either way, it's somewhere between eight thirty and nine forty-nine a month, um, which is a chunk of change. Um, if you did this, its residual value would be thirty thousand five hundred at the end of a three-year lease, and you'd have the option to purchase it for that amount. Um, and the next page gives you.
Here at the time?
I'm sorry.
Three, three years, three years.
Three years, yeah. Um, the second, page seventeen gives you the hybrid, which is more. Um, sixty-eight thousand dollar vehicle. Well, sorry, sixty, yeah, sixty-four thousand of it, but MSRP, they give you, there's some, uh, rebates and things because they want people to buy hybrids, so it does bring it down a little bit. Um, but again, that's a really expensive base, thirteen hundred and sixty-one dollars. Um. And then while we were there, I was like, do you have anything used on the lot? Is that the other option? And so they gave us, um, information on too many pages in here. Like, they, they showered me with paperwork loads there. Um, page twenty-one is a used F one fifty. And of course, there's no guarantee that it'll still be on the lot, but it was at fifty-five thousand and fifty miles. And it's currently twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars to purchase it. Um, so that is, that is an option. Um. And then knowing that if we were gonna make a decision, our procurement policy says we should request it's, well, it's from three places, so I did reach out to Manamack Ford, which has a location in Brattleboro. And I reached out to the GMC Auto Mall in Brattleboro and had a long phone conversation with Shane. And he said he would get me everything before the end of the day Tuesday, because he's off on Wednesday, and I don't have anything from him, so there's nothing in the packet from them, but we did reach out and apply whatever procurement policy. I did ask Claire about that, and I said, sir, procurement policy, you need to ask for three, and she kinda said, yeah. It's good practice.
Well, you asked for three.
I did.
Just didn't get.
Yeah. So, um. I don't know, I'm not a great vehicle person in terms of.
Should have my husband.
Makes the most sense.
Get it for you.
Yeah. I'd be fine with that.
Dealers do not like it.
That was the other thing, they didn't feel like there was any negotiation, because they know you're there from a government entity. Yeah, and, um, and it was, if we decide to go the lease route, I think it will be complicated, because like at Faith's Board, I brought an entire folder full of the things I thought I would need. Quickbooks reports, bank statements, and he was like, we'll get into all of that once you and your board make a decision. Then they're like, we'll put you in touch with the financing people who do that, and they were like, and it'll be up to you and them to figure out how you improve that you, our organization can actually pay this. And, because I said I'm a little worried about that, because like, you know, we don't have social security number, like, can't run the credit. And he said, I'll be honest, he's like, we sell to the government all the time, we've never leased to the government, whether it's town, school, county or state.
They wouldn't, or they haven't?
They haven't. He's like, so he's like, I can't speak to how that might go. Um, so I do have some concern about if we go the lease route. How that.
How much money have we got to play with?
That's a good question, so. I tried to do a little bit of a cash flow forecast and see where it would put us into early July. And it would be tight, but I think doable to buy the used truck. And just not have a lot of wiggle worm right around. And the challenge there, of course, is that the state budget office shuts down, and so we go through a gap in payments every year. On the beginning of July, um, it's a little bit better today, we finally got our grant agreement for Grant Aid. Um, that's a really big item, um, and I got the invoice submitted today. Which is, um, a full month later than we invoiced them last year, because we were, there was a backup in A and R's office with the budgets, with the agreements.
With a pay at this stage.
Forty percent, so thirty, let's say thirty-five thousand dollars on the agreement, so that, that was what may help. Um, and then, of course, there's the uncertainty around state budget, um, we'll get that core services payment fairly quickly, as long as the state passes a budget. And I know Meg sort of said, she thought there was a chance for a shutdown this year, just because they're so far, our team, the governor and all your slitter. So there is just a lot of uncertainty. I wish I had a, I wish I could give you a, a really clear, like, we should do this.
Well, if you could, probably, under the current circumstances, you'd be the only one in the country.
Um, Shane from GMC did try really hard to convince me that we should do an electric vehicle. I just come back to, we don't have anywhere to charge.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
And I was like, I, could we put a charger at someone's house? Is that a?
The issue is, or what I have learned is that you will have to, like, revamp your houses electrical. Unless somebody here.
So even with the programs that are out there.
So I, my neighbors went through this, this is why I know, they bought it, the, the government pays for your charger. They don't pay for you to revamp your house, which is like a lot of money.
Okay, you drive electric, right?
Yep, and we have a charger.
Okay.
Yeah. Nick has. Everything's gonna be housed.
Yeah. If I only had an extra building. I, don't I wish, then wouldn't that be fabulous?
Well, of course, there's the fact that electricity's not free.
No, but, so the way we, at this point, just, just as background. The state paid for the charger. The company, Chevy Company, paid for the installation of the charger, but not for the upgrade on our electricity.
Yeah.
But in our case, it's an old house, it needed it anyway, so I didn't feel as, I mean, I felt bad writing the check, but I, in principle, I didn't feel that bad about it, because we really needed to do it anyhow.
Yeah.
And as of now, I think they still have. Um, so we basically charge at night. And we get, we pay a lower. And we get, we pay a lower electric bill or a low ele- electric rate for that. Because we're doing it off peak. I, don't ask me what those numbers are, because I don't remember, but I remember when we looked at it at the time, it was like, okay, this is good. If. If there was a way to calculate when it was charging your vehicle and when it was charging ours. Uh, you know, I, I could see doing that, but I don't know how to do that, and I don't know if it's doable.
And it may. I think that might be getting a little too.
Yeah.
Yeah, mixed. I mean.
Well, it would have to be something where we could clearly say, vehicle A, vehicle B.
But then also.
I don't know how you do that.
On the days that we carpool, it means leaving four cars at your house, making sure that we like four, like, I think, yeah.
And honestly, on really bad days in winter. We don't want to drive up Bonnieville Road.
Right.
Of course, you won't be taking the boats in the middle of the winter.
So it might be taking the truck.
You might be taking the truck, presumably it would be taking the truck.
I tell you, having just done payroll yesterday, yeah, yesterday, the amount of mileage the five of us or the four of us had. Submit for mileage, um, was staggering. Granted, it was a tough two weeks, but.
But still.
It would take a bit of that off of everyone's personal vehicle if we had a vehicle.
Yeah, which would be a good idea.
Yeah.
And you're, there's some reason, well, this is a Ford, are they all Fords you talked?
I asked for a G M C quote. I didn't have a lot. I guess I thought it was nice to be able to compare similar products. In terms of dealership or dealerships, and I don't know a ton about other types of vehicles outside of those.
You have to buy American.
We're not required to. Yeah, we didn't get into it when I was there that day. I didn't tell them I wanted an F one fifty, I said I need a truck, it needs to have a hitch, and it needs to have an extended or a crew cab. That was a reminder when I said that he's getting one back. When she laughed at, apparently nobody buys.
Yeah, you can't get them, they pay extra. I prefer them, but.
Okay.
He's showing.
Oh, yeah. Our son-in-law does a lot with. Dealership down in the green, I'm not sure. He buys Fords, he's got three, four, five for his business. Um, that, that might be exaggeration. He has at least two or three. His is a hybrid. But I have no idea what kind of deals he gets or anything. Can't get it through his business anyway.
And the charging thing, realistically, that's a.
What, you know, what kind of a cost, I mean, is an electric vehicle even in our dreams or our budget or?
They're less than hybrids, aren't they?
No.
No, more?
Yeah, uh, 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 an F one fifty, electric would be, I think about seventy thousand.
Okay.
I looked at the Volkswagen uh bus that they just came out with, that's electric. Yes. It's seventy grand.
It's so disappointing, because there was such an, an effort underway to bring down. Yeah. What was I going to say? Oh, that if you, so if you went the lease option, the advantage is you don't have the hit to cash flow, because you're trying to pay thirty thousand dollars all at once. The disadvantage is, I'm just looking to see. What's the, what do you pay total over the life of a three-year lease?
Oh, I just figured out it. Thirty, I came up with about, I did twelve months at nine hundred dollars. Times three years is, if I did my math right, thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
James, what am I?
And so, you know, then if you were to buy it at the end of that, to the thirty thousand five hundred.
And that's a big if, we'll be older for it by the end of it, I don't know.
Whereas, I don't know. And some on what the fifth, like on the one that you, they've got used for twenty-nine thousand. And somewhat those fifty-five thousand miles will light on the truck.
Yeah, I did email them today and ask for information about damages and I just didn't. Because I was curious, I think if they add something, you would.
You can do car facts or something, like, um, different vehicles to find out if it's been in accident. Or came up from. New Orleans or something, yeah, what came out of the bottom of the lake.
But if it didn't come out of the bottom of the lake, it's probably better if it came from New Orleans, because.
Right, no winner.
They had no salt, yeah.
Right. So you didn't see the used truck or?
No, he had me sit in the F one fifty, wanted me to test drive it, and I was like, I don't think I need to test drive it, it's weird, mine are vehicles, not so. It's a truck, like, he turned it on, and I was like, yeah, sounds like a truck. I did, oh, it's no, I sit in the back, I sat in the backseat, it's very spacious. It is very spacious, but that was the new one. Um, I have not seen the other one, that's not a picture in here.
I can't remember, did you say what year the used?
It's a twenty twenty.
Oh, oh, sorry, it was a great deal, right?
I, that's what I thought too, I mean, I don't know, everything's so expensive anymore. I think the advantage there is it's a one-time expense and it's done, we're not committing.
So twenty twenty, that's what they put like, what, ten or eleven thousand miles on a year, so it doesn't sound at all.
Yeah.
What did you say the mileage was?
Fifty-five. So they didn't put a lot on, assuming it was sold in it, I mean, sometimes they sit on a lot for a year. But, um.
I hate making these decisions for myself, so I don't know how we.
Well, I mean, the, the risk factor is. It's more expensive to have the lease, but if you have a breakdown. You're not the one footing the bill for the new transmission or whatever. Um, I think, I mean, I've, I've never had a lease. Well, they certainly cover some, I don't know if they cover everything, but they certainly cover some stuff.
I don't know either, that's something we.
All I know is that it's leasing.
And I mean, I've always bought and I've always bought used, so I'm not much help.
I've always bought used. Meg, where did you get? Your, like, your Beamer and whatever else, and she's gotten such great deals on?
Well, we got them from a guy who's not there anymore, who retired, and that was Alan Scott on Putney Road. And we've got both the pickup and the Beamer from him, and in both cases, I think he was very fair and he's, you know. Stood, if there were problems, immediate problems, he took care of them and, you know, stood behind it. Uh, and like dealing with him, unfortunately, he retired. And, uh. So, you know, I don't, I don't have a, anybody else like kicking around that I can say, oh, call this guy. But, I don't know, I just, I have. This may be very naive, I don't know. But I have trouble understanding why they would lease cars if they weren't making more money on.
Right, you pay interest.
So in the long run, I don't, I mean, a five or six-year-old truck that's intact. Is still selling for a pretty damn good price right now. So.
I could see leasing to then buy an electric in three years, or like something like that, like not buy the vehicle we're driving.
But you'd have trade-in value if you buy it.
Right, no, 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 I get that, yeah, yeah. And I was gonna say, even if you, and I'm not, I, I don't know what dealership this comes from, I'm not dealt with them or anything, so I've no. What is it, skin in the game or whatever? But if you buy it for thirty thousand and you decide in three years.
Right.
You still have a vehicle that you could trade or whatever, but.
Yeah, there you go.
Might still have some value.
In this area, you can always sell.
Is it four-wheel drive?
I mean, you just can. So, and yes, it'd be absurd to get one that wasn't fully open.
Right.
Given where you're gonna be going. And remember, you use the four-wheel drive to get out, not to get in. Just the thing my father told me when I was like, don't use, if you can't get in without the four-wheel drive, don't go. Because the four-wheel drive will get you out of something you could go in. But if you drive in as far as you can with the four-wheel drive, you're probably stuck. And he was right. With a good piece of advice.
I thought you were talking about like if you go off the road, it might get you out of the ditch, but it won't keep you from going.
No, no, it's just, um. People have a tendency to say, well, I've got four-wheel drive, I can go better. And then when they are all the way in, they realize that now I am really stuck, and my four-wheel drive is not getting me out of here.
Well, you see people on the interstate and one are going eighty.
Yeah.
Because they think, oh, I've got four-wheel drive.
Well, they've seen those ads, you know.
Yeah, it's like, like, that's gonna be anything when you catch ice.
Right, so. So I, I kind of have a personal bias in favor of actually buying something. But I don't really know if that's financially. The smartest thing, it's just.
If I was buying for myself, I'd buy the second hand. I don't know why it's different, it does seem a little bit different, I don't know if it's, we have more accountability as a. As a, oh, I don't know, we don't account to anybody, do we?
We'll count to everybody. I will say, I asked Claire her thoughts about all this, and she said the used truck, she's like, that's what the other districts that have trucks have done.
She said what?
That, that's what the other districts who have trucks, all of them bought. Because they just could not afford.
Yeah.
Even with the money, because those were years when they got funds from the state, but they didn't get enough to buy a new truck.
Yeah. And how much truck money did we get?
We didn't get any truck money. We're spending money that we have retained from grants and sales and. Uh, May has shared a article from Consumer Reports about buying versus leasing a car.
Ah, thank you, May.
I don't feel confident to give you a Reader's Digest version, so I think. Yeah.
So yeah, basically, I'm reading very fast. A lease allows you to, to drive a vehicle you might not be able to afford, but at the end of it, you don't have anything. And so you get into a cycle of leasing and leasing and leasing and never.
I took out the second hand and do it quickly before prices go up.
I didn't wonder that.
Of course. We will know what's up.
No, we don't know.
From leaders, then I'll do.
Leaders have. Well, I do, but he's not novice, um, they're not novice, anyway. So this is, you only got the one, I'm sorry, you're trying to.
No, you're fine, it's all, talking about the pros of leasing, you drive the car during its most troubled three years. Um, you're always driving a late model vehicle, which is recovered by the manufacturers, new car warranty. Often leases include free oil changes and underscheduled maintenance. They did not discuss that when I was there, um, you can drive a nicer vehicle than you could otherwise afford. Your vehicle will have the latest safety features.
Yeah, I'm not so impressed with latest safety, but it would look like my car had a few less.
Yeah.
Beeping at me when we have the cruise control on, it's like, we had that shut off once, why did they reset that? Dealership. Yeah, I just, I don't know whether we, you try to see if there are any other used ones out there.
To look for a lower price, to look for a lower price.
Or even, I don't know how much time you think you have to do this or whatever, but just to, you know, whether there's one in better condition.
So there is another used vehicle in the packet, but it was more, um, it's the one on page twenty-four. But it's quite a bit more, forty-four thousand. Only has nineteen hundred miles.
Oh. Yeah, that took me a second to that.
It's a twenty twenty-four, nineteen hundred miles, and it says. Uh, conditional price forty-four eight thirteen. I don't know why they think we qualify for that, it looks like they've given us every discount they have, including college student recognition and the military recognition. Also the first responder recognition. I don't know, maybe they give those things away, but we, we don't qualify for any of those.
First responder for dying freeze.
When we got cell phones, there was a day there that the person I was working with at A T and T.
Oh, yeah.
Thought he was gonna be able to get us, there's apparently a special tier of cell phones for first responders. And he was like, tell, tell me about the work you do, you guys respond to emergencies, and I was like, well. I mean, in a flood, like, we're, you know, we're sometimes. People that come out and give advice pretty quickly or whatever, and he was like, I'm gonna see if I can get you, because he's like, you get phones that apparently in a natural disaster, they turn off most people's cell phones. But people who have this plan, can their phones continue to work? Then he called me back and he was like, yeah, you got declined. Yeah, I don't know, I was like, we probably shouldn't.
Always wants to see it.
Yeah, I mean. If we could. I mean, five years old with fifty-five thousand miles for thirty thousand dollars does not sound that bad. In the current environment.
I would be nervous to pay forty-four right now, and worry about our cash flow.
Yeah. And, you know, truck. Let's remember that trucks are not permanent, it's not like buying property.
Right.
You get one, eventually it dies, or you sell it and you get something else.
So, but you talked that, um. Somebody you were talking to, like, that we don't have social security numbers.
It's all about leasing.
Leasing, yeah. But do we have the ability to buy? I mean, can it be registered to the Wyndham County Natural Resources?
Other districts have done that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was, I was thinking about, that will be a fun adventure too, but having been to the D M V in Vermont.
Yeah, people have that one. What about the one in Springfield?
Go to the D M V.
We're gonna go to the D M V, we should go to one in Springfield. We have not had good experiences with the other one.
The one in Dumerson, okay.
The one in what?
Dumerson.
It's only open like two days a week.
Yeah, they're not set up to do anything, that's not the totally routine stuff. So if you have any kind of odd question, though, like. Yeah, I'd, I'd go to Springfield.
I mean, the water chestnut people start June, what'd you say, second is their first day?
Yeah.
And they may not need to go put boats in the water that day, but pretty quickly thereafter.
Yeah, I mean, middle of June is when I expect to see the water chestnut out, um. But.
My question is, how, how much time do we have before we need to have a vehicle in our possession?
Sooner would also be good, so we know things, like, if we're gonna get a trailer, we need to buy the car and then the things. I think soon as possible.
Do we have money to buy a trailer?
Yes, we actually grant money for that.
Yeah.
We have one-time funds from N R C C for kayaks, canoes and a trailer.
Well, you can't have one of those without trucks, so. I think Grant should cover the truck.
Sure, I'll just talk Claire. I made an edit. Instead of fourteen thousand dollars, it's now forty-four thousand dollars.
It's a really expensive trailer, it came with a truck. That'd be really funny if you sent her a photo, we bought a trailer and a truck.
But yeah, I think that's, it would be, if we had that, then we can buy other things and like, all that, it's my problem.
So. Did you go online yourself at all, or like, to like, put in F whatever, one fifty Ford truck? To see if any pop up, because that's something you can do, right?
Like, to buy from a person, you mean?
No, even from dealers, you can say, you can.
I did not.
Go online and, like, when we were buying our new Subaru, we put in that we wanted a Subaru Forester or whatever, and it came up that this. Dealer had this and this dealer had that, and, um, I don't know if they do that with used vehicles or not, but, um. I'm just thinking maybe in the next couple of days, like, if we authorize you to spend up to. Thirty, whatever you think that cash flow can handle, and I assume, you know, it's gotta include the fees and whatever. Um, just maybe if you could do some kind of online search or.
I'm a little uncomfortable with it then being my call. Like, how do I compare apples to oranges, like, this one's last.
By this car.
Well.
I can understand.
Yeah, that feels more consistent with our procurement policy, so I guess I do have a question. Do you want me to do more research and could we, so next month they were meeting together for the strategic planning thing? Could we very quickly have a very short special meeting to review and vote? Is that too much to pack into a night?
Well, the thing is, if you, if you're gonna get a used vehicle. And you've got a good deal on it, you just have to do it.
Yeah, you're right.
You can't wait for the meeting next week.
Okay.
And like, Google puts a lot of pins, not super close, so, like, rain, 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 swans, and. And like, Google puts a lot of pins, not super close, so, like, Keane, Randolph, Swinsey. There is a Springfield one.
Yeah, Keane would be fine, Swinsey would be fine. Well, you, you pay it. Although, wait, there's no sales tax for us anywhere.
Oh, look at that.
That will.
Yeah.
I don't always insist with small transactions, but I guess we will.
Yes, we will, we will insist on that. I mean, my feeling is if we're gonna go use, which I would be very comfortable with. That you find something, you have to try it.
Oh, yeah.
You know? And maybe you have a couple of you drive it just to make sure that it feels, like, I've tried cars that just didn't feel right and I've walked away. Cause they just, I don't know, the stealing, steering was loose or something, like, eh. Um, but if you try it and it's comfortable and it fits our. Money, I think you just have to go ahead and commit, and I suppose that what we could do. And I, I don't know, is there a legit way to do this? Linda, you're the rules person. Um, if Cory were to call a couple of us and say, this is what I've found. I know we can't do this officially, but does it sound okay to you? Would, would you at least feel somewhat supported that way? I'm, I'm not trying to put you out on a limb, I'm just saying, when you're buying used. You gotta just do it. Cause if it's a really good deal, it'll be gone tomorrow.
Right.
And.
Jeff, would you have any availability to go look at a vehicle with me?
Yeah.
Would it, maybe you deputize the two of us or something, so that it's not just one person? Who's not even elected?
I, I. Yeah.
If that's okay, I'll put you on the spot.
Uh, no, no, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
I'm no expert on, on, on vehicles, but, uh, but yeah, no, somebody to talk things over with, I think is. Is, uh, is good.
So the shoes one is from Faith's Toyota.
Yeah.
Boy, which is in.
Westminster.
Westminster, yes. Although they now have one in Rattleboro.
Do they?
That's Mananac.
Yeah, cause that's who I got the other foot from.
There's, right next to Exa Three. The, the thing has a new sign up that says Faith's.
Wow.
Unless I have come, we had a pizza there the other night. And, and I looked over and I thought, huh, that's a different size.
It would be funny if the Mananac people were just over and Keane had responded to me.
It just became Mananac in Rattleboro.
Yeah. Yeah.
Google, can you Google that? I mean, I know the sign says. While she's looking that up. Speaking of Cheshire. You know, what's her name is?
Yeah, she's the new executive director of the.
She told me that, I can't even remember where I saw her before, and I was like, I'm not gonna tell Cory.
No, we're excited, we like Benay, Benay got her job. Benay had been there as the outreach coordinator.
Yeah.
Um, they got the right person for that job, though, Amanda's been there and knows everybody, and she'll be terrific. I don't know, I was surprised. And that's why.
Yeah. I've got a friend who's a salesman at Westminster.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, you mentioned that to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, who is it?
Um, um, Patrick Carroll.
Okay. I've been talking with Scott.
Yeah.
I have his business card, but.
But I could say to Patrick, is it a good deal?
Okay. We'll take any inside.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna. Pay top dollar at, at Faith's anywhere, I mean, any Ford dealership.
Right.
It would be more expensive than, you know, Craigslist or, or, you know. Joe Bloggs down the road.
Right.
But I guess you have, well, you do have something of a guarantee, don't you, like, that guarantee?
I've bought a used car in a long time, I don't know.
Yeah.
I always thought that we haven't seen when I got a used car, cause I was nervous about it. It's, but you pay quite a bit for that one, gee.
Sometimes if it came with it, but it's like usually like five years or like X.
Most warranty, or at least sixty thousand miles. Some of the stuff, so. You know. It seems like there'd still be some warranty left on some of the major things.
Okay, we knock that out most.
So. Sound like we ought to have some kind of a motion on this situation. I move that we deputize Cory and Jeff. To explore options for a used. Pickup truck. Uh, with price not to exceed. Thirty-five? Thousand? Do you need to do a little maneuvering room? Be using all that junk?
Yeah, I guess. You give us guidance on that.
I would get down the cash flow assessment and, yeah, no, it's available.
And if that number is too big, tell me.
No, I think, but then, yeah, I wouldn't go over that.
Yeah. Any further, so a second on that, I think we should have a second on this one. Okay, any further discussion? Everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Why can't I not make this big?
I think you're still sharing your screen.
You're sharing your screen.
Oh. Magic, thank you.
Um, happy hunting, Kevin. The storage shed doesn't take us far. Next on our agenda is district acquisition of a storage shed for to be bid and potentially select supplies.
Did you have a chance to put together? And ask a bit.
Oh, no, I didn't.
So it won't take any time at all.
But I think, um. Probably the way this has to happen is, is that I think I sell, you were shared. I mean, you can't, you can't, you could. Buy the materials, you paid my time, but I think that gets us into all sorts of, um, tax. Laws and you'd be paying unemployment insurance form and that sort of thing.
Uh, you're right, if we contract to you, we'd, in, we, I checked with VLCT, we can't, like, you have, you would have to have. Workers' comp coverage and all that jazz.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought about that.
So I should, I should have had a price to give to offer here.
Can't we volunteer this time?
I've got too much on.
I, I was trying to get some creative way that you could still be paid, but. Not have it be called, but that's, yeah.
No, I think that's something they've, they've, uh. They really, they really don't. They really go out of their way to prevent you doing that. A horror story to tell for the Vermont Theater Company.
Okay.
We, we pay twenty-five dollars stipend, uh, for people doing. Murder mysteries and they are our employees, so I have to pay unemployment insurance on twenty-five dollars.
And workers' comp?
Not workers.
You didn't get that, okay.
Oh, well, they haven't hit me for that.
Yeah.
I mean, the twenty-five cents is all right, but the paperwork, you get that same thing, um.
So how would it work for Jeff to build this shed and then sell it to us?
Why not?
I just, I, talk me through like the steps.
He, he would have to certainly recuse himself from the vote to do it.
Right.
Um.
What, how, whatever form it takes.
And, but I think that you've explored other options. And we're trying to save the district some money, if that works, or at least have a shed of quality that we know. That's what we want. Jeff and Cory came up and took a look and we, I think, settled on a spot, if everybody's still comfortable with that. Hmm, I mean.
And I think there's a level of, because we're doing it on a supervisor's property as opposed to like at the district space, um. There was a comfort for me of like, okay, the two of you know each other, and if Jeff needs to come work at this time or that time or whatever.
I don't.
I was nervous about if I'm working with a third party that I don't know.
Yeah.
Just how much of my time am I gonna spend babysitting in this operation?
Right. No, Jeff can come and work whenever he pleases. And, uh, that's, I don't see that as being issued at all. And I did check with the town, and we do need a permit, it'll cost.
Eighty-nine bucks.
Yeah, it was like ninety dollars or something like that.
Okay.
Which I, I, I have it written down, I just don't have those notes with me, um, and. Okay, and it's, I know it was under a hundred, it was two digits. And, um, I said, is there likely to be any complexity with this, and he said, no. No, this is just.
But you do have to wait, uh, I think it's sixteen days from the date that the permit is granted.
I haven't done the others and nobody told me that.
The shed out there, and, uh.
You're, you're going in the shed business, okay, um.
Are you for Jordan Marlboro?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, when I, when I called, he said, you know, it'll take a few days for the paperwork to go through, but. And, um.
Oh.
They. And I said, you know, it's, it's on a farm, and he said, oh, you know. He said, if it's under ten by ten, and I said, no, it'll be over that. I said, it's gonna be more like ten by fourteen or something like that, and he said, well, as long as it's under three hundred square feet.
Oh, perhaps not so different.
That, there, there was, there was a line there at three hundred square feet, and we're way under that, cause we're talking about something that's like ten by fourteen.
Yeah.
So that's, or ten by fifteen, so that's half of that, then there was a little something more that had to happen, it still wasn't very complicated, but. So anyway. That's what they told me.
Right.
That's what I know, um. So I'm.
Well, I don't think, I don't think anyone is letting us possibly.
Honestly, nobody's even gonna check, let's be real here. And we're talking about something pretty straightforward with. It's, it's got its back to the wind, have a big enough door on the side that you can put reasonably large things in and out. Should be pretty straightforward, I think. It will have a floor, but just planks.
And it'll be movable.
Yes, and it won't be dug into the ground. Oh, yes.
Okay, someday we need to find it in your home.
Yeah.
Whitey Ham may be different, too.
Oh, Whitey Ham's very different, there's a, a container house that's been put up that evidently did not get. Any kind of zoning.
That house didn't get any zone.
There's some thought, and now he's looking to put another one. Up. Um, that. Is over a brook, and. It's over a brook. Yeah, so. That gets a little, anyway. That's a whole other issue, that's like. Yeah, so, you, you looking at cross there?
Looking at Jamaica Cottage Shop and what they had for.
Yep.
For options. And, uh. And they're mostly small, there's a ten by fourteen, seventy-three hundred, fully assembled, dropped on your site.
Is there any installation that needs to be done once they drop it on your site?
Is it mobiles and?
Hmm.
Is it mobile?
I imagine if they drop them, they can drive it.
Yeah, you would have to be able to jack it back up.
Yeah.
Put it on a trailer.
Yeah.
Um, I think there may be a five hundred dollar delivery fee, so it'd be more like seventy-eight hundred.
I'll stab your head, good to be.
Yes, I would do it for seven thousand. All in, everything done, but. I think, I think I would. Do just fine with that.
If we did it that way, where you sold the district a shed, like, you would have to buy all the materials and do all, and then just issue also bill. When you're done.
Yes, okay. Yes.
I know, you'd become a contractor. If we start buying materials.
Right, yeah, right, yeah. And, and, uh, as a, as a private individual. Um, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing to stop you buying something from me, I don't have to be official or dealer or anything.
You can have a shed hit out back we don't know about. We're just buying a shed.
Yeah.
Right?
As far as I know.
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's, that seems to be really what you're looking for, it's just something that can come in and be put.
You don't have to get three quotes, do you?
No, cause it's below our procurement policy, fifteen thousand's the trigger.
So just in the looking after. Taxpayer funds or whatever, you mentioned at our last meeting, something about one at Home Depot. Was it this big, was it this size?
It was smaller.
Okay, and you did mention that that was five thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it wood or was one, one of those cheap metal sided things?
I don't remember, they have contacted me four times a day since then.
Sorry.
They really want sale.
I just wanted to kind of bring that back into the conversation, that this potentially is more money than you had mentioned, but it's for a different product. It sounds like, uh, and, uh, homegrown and better built, so. I mean, if they keep following you, you could just start bidding them down. But, yeah, I mean, if it's not what we want, then we don't want it.
Exactly.
If it's not. What. If it will not suit our purposes. The need, then there's no point. Okay, um, so on this one, then I guess. There could be a motion to accept. This bid for a shed. If someone wants to make that motion for seven and eleven, no, ten by fourteen shed. For seven thousand dollars would be the bid, right?
Yeah.
Would, would anyone like to make that motion?
I moved.
Second. Any further discussion questions?
Don't want me to leave you, I'll just refuse myself.
Yeah.
Anyone feel any need for Jeff to move from the room while we discuss this?
So we are talking about something that's built on skids or something, like somehow can be. Around a trailer and move if it needs to be.
Yeah. And I think at some point we should probably have an MOU with you, just so we have something to write in.
Sure.
I'm not overly worried about it, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, I could drop dead tomorrow, I'm not planning on it, but who knows, um. I.
We all, we all.
All joking aside, I mean, if, if the shed belongs to the district and it's on your property, somewhere there should be something. Oh, absolutely.
I'm guessing VLCT is gonna wanna see an MOU before they insure it, so, yeah, where are we insuring this spread at?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to buy a ten by fourteen shed for seven thousand dollars? All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving right along. Cause I can't be taken. In by the, it's still being light up.
Must still be early, right?
Well, it's, it's going to, but we thought we, we were debating if we should be under our hours tonight, and it definitely said rain, but.
Well, it was, it was just barely spitting when I came in, but.
They have been a part of me that was hoping that it was raining here because I have been being bitten by the black flies in my barn.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're out.
I haven't had them yet.
I wasn't really looking forward to that. Plant sale recap.
I can give you an updated expenses and revenue.
Is that what Kelly's?
Yeah. Out of Quechua NRCD bought five hundred dollars worth of stems from us, from the leftovers. Kudos to Isabel for coordinating that, it was great.
She was going to the horse.
Education. Or I've never quite seen that, okay, um, actually, I didn't enter that yet, but I can do that, and I had forty, uh, forty thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-three cents is our total revenue.
And expenses of forty-three thousand, no.
I rated the wrong report. Hang on. Clicked on something I never clicked on.
When I'm starting right now, it's so confusing.
I know, I'm so terrified to go to bookbooks online and have to relearn all this.
I'm terrified of the succession lines that you have that we'd have to figure out.
Okay, try this again. Total income is forty thousand. Wait, I can do math in my head. Forty-one thousand and thirty-nine dollars and four cents. Uh, total expense is thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents. So that's. Eight and a half thousand dollars ish of profit. Which is about the same as last year, almost exactly. That includes staff time, but it includes staff time at actual rates that were paid. And doesn't include fringe benefits and all that stuff, but that's in a different grand class currently, so. Um, it's debatable if it's profitable, really. But we also have said that we can get certain purposes of purpose in the community.
In terms of visibility, I think it's very important.
Yes, that includes trap. There were ones less, so, and that's all in there as of today. Yes, lots of happy fisherman this afternoon. Reactions or thoughts about like, well, we should do differently here?
It seemed to me. Um, but we had more runners, which was great. Yeah, I mean, it felt pretty good, I thought.
I think we still need to work on the packing of the orders in terms of accuracy. That was a pretty big.
I spent a lot of time last week responding to people after the fact who didn't check their order and then. It was usually that they were supposed to get a bundle of five or something and got one. And of course it was too late to fix it, so it's a lot of refunding and credits, which is disappointing when I like doing that.
What people complained after leave?
Oh, yes.
How many?
I'd say ten.
Yeah, all the ten old as well, were missed.
Well, that was after the fact. Then day, uh, was a lot.
I was, I was trying to think about like whether we could have one person as the orders are assembled by other people that double checks it, but.
We, we discussed that.
You'd have to be moving pretty fast, because.
Well, you could do it before. Like you could do it Friday, Thursday, Friday. No, I mean, even before though, like. We pack orders pretty fast, so for a person to be there and say, okay, this order is right. And whether we do it only with a certain size of order or.
But if, if we use the carts. And people, and when you're picking the order, you put all the stuff on the cart, but not in a box. Then the person that's checking the orders is just looking at the sheet and the stuff in the cart. And then they box it. And if that meant we needed two people to be doing that, and I mean, we'd have to rotate around because doing that all day, I think drives you to drowsiness.
I think it'd be worth it because I think if we keep having these kinds of mistakes, some people may not work for us.
Well, and it's frustrating. It takes time at a time when we haven't got time.
I, I mean, depending on what, we had a lot of perennials left over and stuff, right? So, a- and. It was our sense that we'd had the right number of things to fill the orders, so. If we could have avoided issuing credits.
Yeah, and if a lot of them were, you were supposed to pick up, you, you'd ordered a package of five and you only picked up a packet of one. You know, that's, that would explain some of the overages that we had. Where we had more plants that, and I, I distinctly remember some of them like, well, you know. That we, I, we had to break up this package so people could buy them in ones.
That should have been a red flag.
It should have been a red flag. I had no brain cells.
Well, I've tried it both ways, right? Where, you know, like if an order is for twenty-five balsam fir. That that's bundled that way and it has that order number on it, but then it makes the.
It slows you down.
Slows you down packing, but. It slows you down. Being more accurate in the long run, I don't.
I don't think we were more accurate. I mean, well, back when we did it that way, we still had mistakes. Except that Jolene used to stay until midnight or something, checking every blessed order. And I know you did a bunch of them.
I, no, I, I mean, I did the one that I discovered because of whatever it was.
Um, but I, I do think that we, we aren't as. Rigorous and, and, and I found myself, you know, doing it to like, so how many are in an order? And maybe one of the things that should be on the box is, you know, like sold in groups of.
Oh, where you're packing the orders, you mean?
Yeah, so that, I mean. Trying to, trying to, when you've got a couple of hundred orders, trying to go through all those groups of plants to try to find the one with correct number on it. Is, is a pain. I mean, the correct order number. As opposed to, I mean, the vast majority of them are, you know, ones, fives and tens. And.
And if we just insisted on, like. Packet, like if, if, if this guy order has ten, not taking two fives, actually finding the ten. We would have sort of, most rest mistakes never happened. And so if you did have somebody who was responsible for checking, that could go, and now you gotta go back and get the, the ten back.
I think it makes sense that a checker or two.
Yeah, it, it's almost, to some extent, it's kind of like the more people you have, the more mistakes you have made, just because. Some of the people aren't as experienced at doing it. And I mean, even those of us that are experienced.
Oh, I mean, it's easy thing to make this stuff.
You know, I've joked in the past, we all have different markers or whatever, so we. Cause then we could say, well, we really shouldn't have this person help us again, or. Well, I was thinking, this person did an amazing job.
Could just, we could initial our forms as.
But, but then, yeah, then it does, it's into. The blame game or whatever. I think it's more just a matter of, i- if we have plenty of people like we did this year. I think most of the time when the orders were being packed, um, having, I think it would probably take two people to kind of.
We also don't need to accept volunteers on packing day.
Yeah, I think you might be right. There's just too much opportunity for mistakes. And I think we need more help on Wednesday when we're soaking roots, because that's a little simpler job and it just takes, it's a lot of people.
Even that, so, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you can mess that up.
Well, but like we did a assembly line, I think it was Thursday, whatever, with like. Yeah, and that was great and simple.
Yeah, so, yeah, maybe that's what. That would be good.
I think I'd like to try to do a little bit less variety next year, just a tiny bit, because it is. One of the variety currently, I don't know if it's entirely necessary.
I was gonna ask about the perennials, because I have all the leftovers in my truck. If anyone loves perennials.
Are there still some left?
And blueberries, so, um, yeah, we have, we have plants, um, but there is a, like. I, I don't ever plant perennials, so I don't know these things, but like, do we need this many varieties of this kind of lily or whatever? Like, I don't know, that's, if that brings people in.
Well, do we have any sense of like what didn't sell?
Spreadsheet, yeah.
I mean, I could look at the, I can't tell you what sold the day of.
Yeah, and we've like a lot of stuff they all.
Tell you what was left over. Blue mouse ears. Oh, yeah, I don't have the full names of these, so.
I remember that I packed.
Pretty in pink. We had a lot. Moonbeam, which is tixie.
Oh, I might take some more.
Seedum.
I took some of those and it's like, yeah, this is the stuff that grows along the roadside.
And matchsticks, those were the biggest numbers. Those were in the forties or fifties leftover.
They're surprising.
I was surprised the tixie, once I realized what it was.
Two different types of tixie, which I guess moonbeam and. Or is it moonbeam and foriosus? Because we sold out of foriosus. Those were gone quick.
I'll try to get to it a little bit earlier this summer and then have time for some folks to look at the lists. I think last year it really was just me picking stuff because I was worried that we were gonna get left out. Because the stuff sells out in the fall.
Well, and, and there are things that, like, didn't grapes sell out every time we've had them? And this time we didn't have them, you know, so. I mean, I take your point.
Yeah, grapes would be good to do.
And you don't, you don't wanna do too many things, but on the other hand.
Yeah, there, there are some things that sell a year. Variety and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we do two varieties of blueberries instead of three? Do you think people would be super, because currently we do like early, middle, late?
Someone commented today that the, I'm gonna get it wrong, I have to ask her. I wanna say she said Jersey was no longer in her zone and I was like.
Well, that's a.
I'm not the person.
We, we don't live in one zone. We have, we have like three through seven or something.
So, okay, good to know.
I do look at this.
Fennel sound, it might be getting too warm for some of them. We had a lot of leftover. And the other tree, that was a lot. The black cherries, but I don't know why, it's pretty.
I know, but that's a hard thing for.
I, I don't know where the chestnuts would grow up where we are or what we want from the black cherry. I, it's like, no. We're not planting those. We're not good for our cows. If you get a stupid cavity, it's the dead leaves.
And the pawpaw was a huge disappointment. They're super excited about that.
Yeah, and that just.
There's grass layer. And you didn't, you tell me.
I saw a news report that it was like wide, like it was a huge failure for pawpaws this year, so whatever the reason.
And that might be a thing that'd be worth trying again. There's a lot of.
Maybe it's this Amy Can that talked to me for twenty minutes or. I remember long from Westminster, Vermont, because she said something about she knows some lady who has a. Name, some other kind of exotic food up against their barn or whatever, so she thought she could get some pawpaws to go there too, where they were gonna do an exchange, but anyway. I will just mention, yeah, I think I mentioned that the day of, I had extensive conversation with Amy Can of Westminster, Vermont, who was. A violinist, I believe, and said that she loves our district and. Maybe, you know, she could get together a group of musicians or whatever if we were having some event. And wanted some music at it. She did not say whether they would volunteer their time or not, but.
Well, maybe for the, uh. The next, uh. Annual meeting. That might be kind of cool. Different kind of music. We have a different kind of expense.
Katie's taking minutes. So that's Can, A, uh, it's C A N N. Um, Katie and her G, uh, oh my God, I'm so, I'm sorry. Her email address is, whoops, microphone's there, amycanmusic@gmail.com. And you can Google her and find that.
Yeah, I, I happen to know her a little bit, but.
Yeah, anyway, if we should get that into the minutes to have on hand or whatever. We do need to, I don't know how we avoid the situation that I ran into with that very irate lady who was ordered that. Snatched out of it.
But that, how did that get resolved?
Fortunately, Nina was bustling around or whatever and she had. She caught or whatever.
It was like, oh, I got this out of the free box. And I was like, no.
Something, something happened.
And then she came up and it was like, I need that. So, yeah, that was very good.
Yeah, I was like, ooh, she got it out of the free box.
Well, this woman had sent her order down by the pile of free boxes. While she was looking at other things, and someone came along and saw free boxes.
I heard that from like across the road when she added, uh-oh.
I'm not trained for this. Okay, man, we'll, we'll take care of this. Give us a minute. Just please don't shoot anyone. I mean, I'm not. It, yeah. No joke.
There was that guy that was like hanging around, like waiting for a tree or something for a while.
He had ordered a certain number of cherry trees. Five, and he only had four in his box. And there was one cherry tree left, and he was waiting to see, because it was right at the end of the day, if that person didn't show up. So he could get that cherry.
stood there and guarded the tree because he was gonna take it. We need to continue to try to keep customers out of the back.
Yeah, that's.
Get the orders right.
Even if we get the orders right, we need to keep customers out of the back because confusion can happen.
I believe he ate a donut. Well, he was wandering around out there.
So your previous sales had had people try to buy them from me.
Someone did, I know.
They were very good at donuts.
I think you could just go with the cinnamon sugar one, so.
That did seem to be more popular.
I don't know, maybe someone likes the plain.
I think just very.
Okay, we have other things to vote on, so, um, I think we're gonna, because I know it's getting late. Because I'm getting spacey or. Update on federal funding and policies. This should be recent.
I don't have much to share. There's been very little news. There now, we have to take attendance at the office every day. There's a spreadsheet. You're supposed to put an X in every day you're there, because they're, they're trying to track who's in the building. So that they can figure out where they can close buildings, I think. Or where they can shift staff around. But it's just funny, because I'm like, you're telling me the agency doesn't already know who's working in the building and they need another mechanism to track it? But that's the thing that's happening. I have not heard much else. Uh, I'm sure folks heard there was the federal injunction against the government reorganization, so probably that's all on hold, the reduction of force. Once again, we wait for the courts.
Oh, to be a lawyer.
All of our grants at present are fine. We actually got paid on two of them recently. Um, oh, ASAP's the processing system for the steel grass funds. Just got an email this week. Um, it is well named because you get.
You get paid the same day.
Like if you submit it by four P M, it's in your account at five oh one. It's unbelievable. I wish all my grants were that way. Federal government, it's the US Fish and Water Service. Uh, but the payment system is called ASAP, and I'm sure it's an acronym, but I don't know for what. Um, but we got an email that there's, there's a new field in there. You have to fill out a new report. There's the justification for payment. And it literally says that the program review staff that normally review your advice won't review that. Someone else will review that, so. Attend to learn what you're supposed to write in there.
Avoid biodiversity as a word? Do we have updates on how that's gonna work without Rachel or we're not there yet?
We, there's a new person. Yeah, I mean, it's not a new person because they can't hire a big shop. Yeah, Rachel Kalish, who does Fish and Wildlife Services retiring. That's been our contact for all the steel grass work. There's a lot of institutional miles walking out the door and then.
And when, when you multiply that by the whole country.
Well, he said.
Terrifying.
It was nationwide roughly twenty-five percent, and he said Vermont reflected that. Yep, because why would Vermont keep experiencing?
But I, I hear we get to keep Garrett.
Oh, that's a good update. Um, so their court case is still, um, ongoing on the. Okay, but V H C B has basically said that either way, they're going to keep these people there. They'll make them employees if they lose their court case.
Even Garrett.
Welcome back, Garrett.
I could tell he never left. Just like everybody else. Yeah, it's been great. I appreciate V H C B and the way they've handled it.
And that's huge.
Yeah, that's really great.
Apparently there are some. Some organizations around the state who are, uh, wondering if AmeriCorps isn't gonna continue. Whether this consortium of folks can get together with a little bit of state fund. Whether this consortium of folks can get together with a little bit of state funding as well and create something similar to that. And offer some, yeah, offer some positions, so. That would be good, see how that goes.
So basically the state version of America.
Yeah, but funded through various nonprofits and other folks who.
The more we, we.
Find other ways.
Find other ways and s- point, you know, set a model to other places that there are other ways to do this better, so yeah, hope that works.
Yeah, um, strategic planning update.
Um, I think everyone has it on their calendars that we're having this ninety-minute session a week from tonight.
Yeah, Liam tried, double checked with me that I did indeed have a meeting tonight, he says, cause you have one on next Wednesday. And I actually went to a meeting on Monday that isn't till next Monday.
Oh, no.
Fortunately, it's only a mile from my house, but so he was just trying to help me. Not go to a meeting, I said, no, I've been talking to Cory about the agenda for tonight. I know tonight is on and next week is a different meeting. And it's, right, or?
Well, it's either. We said we want the thing in the fall to for sure be in person.
Right.
I think Elise is coming here, though.
I, I told you it was coming, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think Elise is coming.
Oh, right.
So here, here, meaning Jeff's house.
Yeah.
Fine, that's, that's what I think I head down, but I'm just.
And you should have received an emailed survey from her.
I did it this afternoon or some point today.
She's happy for the end of the week if possible.
Whether I made any sense with my answers, just another question, but yeah. It's, yeah, she sent it, what, a couple weeks ago or something, and. Reminder recently.
I did it today as well, so.
Oh, did you check or talk with Claire about these like work?
Claire said that if the, if you have a quorum and any decisions are being made, you're subject to open meeting law. And I think that was a debated issue in that moment of what qualifies as making decisions. Does this?
Only motion, I mean, my take on that would be is that if we take motions, which I don't think for this.
I agree.
We, there would be any need for us to do this. I was trying to think about it. And I know I was on the school board a long time ago, but I feel like we had work sessions and stuff that. Didn't, maybe they were warned, but I don't think so, and they didn't take place like it's normal time that our. Board meetings did.
So according to that, we would have had to, uh, you know, if, if that's not the case, then we would have had to list several workdays for the plant sale.
Right, although we did, we did.
But, I mean, if, 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 if. If we say you have to have a vote, then it's fine. But if you didn't, then. Yeah, I mean, that's nuts.
Right, I did ask my wife what the school's done here, and she's like, they've had strategic planning, they have a board retreat every year, and she's like, none of that's subject, they don't. Follow up or anything like that, so, you know, and that's this, obviously supervisory unions for a lot of people.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I do know we used to be cautioned, we can't have parking lot meetings.
Right.
So you couldn't, all five of you leave a meeting at the same time and chat out in parking. Okay, I just wanted to check on that. And I mean, it's in this recording that we're having this meeting, so if someone. By any chance that listens to this recording, wants to show up here next week. Be part of the strategic planning, I wouldn't turn them away, I don't think.
I think it would be important when the time comes that we should during an actual learned meeting to discuss what has come out of the strategic plan. To adopt.
Yeah, that, but that's an entirely different process.
Yeah. Okay, um, update on hiring process.
Okay, so. We have good news. Um, oh, I should have sent you Arrow's resume. I never moved on that. Um, Arrow Kitchens, who I think you all met at the planet sale, um, Arrow has accepted the job pending board approval. To be an administrative assistant. We're looking at June second, I think, as a start date.
Did Charles turn it down?
He did.
And we probably shouldn't discuss any more nicknames or whatever in open session in terms of like who applied and turned down, maybe. I don't know.
Um, so I think we need a board vote to actually. Hire Arrow. Did folks, I didn't send out the resume, so folks might not know anything about Arrow. Say we're probably gonna take the session if I'm gonna like.
Yep.
Okay, were they, so were they part of the original group that was interviewed?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, second choice.
And it was close, it was, we actually discussed the fact that. Either of these candidates. That either of these candidates would be, would be appropriate, they had different strengths, but they were both. Appropriate, and if the one hadn't applied, the other one clearly would have been fine. So it, it was a nice kind of problem to have. So.
I'm sorry to be whatever.
No, no, it's, that's fine. Um, I will, I. Move that we offer the position to Arrow Kitchens.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
And it was really nice to have the opportunity to. You know, meet them in a work setting, which.
Yeah.
Was very positive and upbeat and.
Yep.
Getting on with it, so that was all good.
Reference checks were all super positive.
Great.
Very reassuring.
Okay.
Okay, now avian technician.
Unfortunately, I don't have anybody to recommend for hire here, because we've been turned down by every single person that offered the position to. So we're out of applicants at the moment, and I'm a little bit back to the drawing board, um, about what to do there. I need to get the steering committee for the project back together and probably get their thoughts. So there was a point where we weren't gonna hire anybody this year. Because it is very, it was late in the game when we got the grant in March, um, to feel good about it, now it's beyond late in the game. I mean, the, the birds are nesting, um, so my inclination would be that we don't hire a seasonal technician this year. The advantage is then we could have one for six months each of the next two years, and they could come in March first. And they would have actual time on the ground to go out and meet the farmers and like build a relationship and.
This is to do with the light moles.
So, the challenge will be, and what I wanna talk with the steering committee about is. If, so we're, we're in the process of sending out postcards to every farmer in the project area, cause we can still get financial assistance, like that we can do. We just need to talk about what does that look like if we get a really nice response, how do we? Process that, like, someone's gotta go out and do some sort of verification that they in fact did not mow. And we need data for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation on, um, the results, so we can't, like, we have people say. Tax percentage of nest fledged, and so could we do that with? All of us, and I think that's probably a cat question, because she's sort of done this as a volunteer in the past, her and Colleen and some other folks. I'm just curious just how much capacity they might have to do that, just to get the money out the door.
Yeah, and could we hire one of them in a part-time kind of way?
I'm good if they wanted it. I got really excited for a minute yesterday because that birdie on the farm, Wendy Ward. I could do it. I was like. That would be the greatest thing ever, then I was like, wait a minute, you're, she's taking the retirement where she's on deferred whatever through the end of September. Can't do federal work. It's a conflict of interest. So.
Is there anybody else in our domain of people who?
I have no idea. I mentioned it to Nate from Harris Nature Center yesterday, and it was like, anybody in your orbit.
Yeah.
You didn't have any ideas. No, I can't give anybody that, with our local allotment that would be suited to this.
Remind me, what's, what's like the timeframe, um, in hours per week?
It's forty hours a week. Although, I mean, I guess I gotta be honest, at this point, we would be pretty flexible. Like if we had a person who wasn't able to give us forty, but was able to do some of the work, we would take it because.
Looking forward, Katie?
No, but I might like. You know, can ask around. What's the, what's the timeframe? Is it just summer?
Yeah, it'll be, well, we were gonna do fifteen weeks. So I guess at this point it's a moving target, because we're, well, we wanted them on board in May first.
Yeah.
So they had a chance to do anything. At this point, they would not be involved on the front end, they wouldn't be out recruiting really. I think they would be involved in verification and, and sort of follow up. And helping us maybe do, there's some mapping that needs to happen, like somebody needs to sit and go through maps and, and preferably somebody who's been looking at our C S data. Can help them to figure out, like, okay, for next year, what's our target? Who are the people we really wanna talk to? Cause this year we just sent a postcard to everybody. But I, I think we wanna be more targeted in years two and three of the project.
So, and what are you calling everybody?
Anybody who's on a farm contact list for a district, and there's four districts that are involved in this. Two in Vermont, two in New Hampshire, so like Heather maintains a list.
My point, my point being that lots of people whose fields get mowed.
Yeah.
Are not farmers.
Right, we can provide technical assistance, but the financial assistance is only allowed for those who are suffering some sort of economic hardship in exchange. So it can't just be that, oh, my field gets brush hogged.
Right.
Um, but if it's a, if it's. It, I, you know, I think the, the assistance is supposed to go to the farmer or not, so like if it's a situation where like. People let a farmer hay their field, it's common, we're not gonna give the F A to the landowner.
Right.
Yeah. And we did check with National Fish and Wildlife about that, and that's their policy, that they, these funds are for that.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm guessing. Given the noise that's coming out of Washington about wanting money to go to farmers, not.
Yeah.
Whatever, that they would also.
Yeah, but just unfortunately this. It's probably hard to write these grants without mentioning like diversity or climate change or. Um, yeah, uh.
I'm in, I'm hopeful, this, they, I mean, this fund just came in again the other day. For the next year, um, which makes me hopeful that this will continue in one of the three years that we have are up, we can re, like, I think if we build something successful. I think we'll ha, we're highly likely to get it funded again and keep it moving, so I'd rather go slow and get it right.
So can you access some of that funding for the work that? This district has already done with the reaching out and sending out the postcards?
Yes, we can do, yep, we'll bill for the staff doing the spend work on it.
And. Then potentially only have this person hired for twelve weeks, if they're not able to start when it really should have.
Yeah, district staff end up doing more than, so there was a plan in the grant proposal for districts to have to do some things, not just have it all be a seasonal play. Um, but if we go beyond that, then that will start to pull money out of the seasonal position, cause there's only one bottom lane.
And what's the other district in Vermont?
Uh, I'll be cheap.
But for, for now, if, if you had somebody for this year. You don't need a bird expert at this point.
Now, I prefer that there's somebody who's a good communicator that could talk to farmers.
That's, and that's a bigger pot of possible people. Than someone who can do that and is also really knowledgeable about birds. So I'm just wondering if. If that expands our possibilities to get somebody. On a.
Right.
You know, for this season.
Yeah.
Who might not be the person next year, but could.
Right.
Get the thing rolling.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a dream of getting somebody that would come back three years in a row.
Yeah, which would be ideal. But since we can't get anybody for one year, maybe, you know.
Yeah. And I have not done this, but I could go back through the applicant pool of the people that we rejected and see if any of them. You know, if we're changing the definition of what we need out of them, maybe.
Right.
I wanted some, they didn't have to be like a bird expert or something, but like. It'd be nice if they had done something, point counts, or had some sort of ability to go out and know what you're looking for when you're watching birds, not a recognized breeding behavior.
Yeah.
Because to document fledging. Nice, but, but that's a learnable skill.
Yeah, and, and a pretty easily learnable skill. I mean, there were all those people that have done the, um. Uh, the twenty-five year. I mean, there's a whole lot of folks that can recognize a fecal sac at this point.
I will say that the folks who turned us down, it was both times it was housing. They just can't find housing for the, what we're able to pay and for the time length. It's like, just like, I want there to be a dormitory that like all of the organizations go in together on. And whether it's Americorps or whatever, we just make that part of the program.
Want to put that on the property?
No, but what I was gonna say was, do they have, do they have dorm facilities available at the old Marlboro College? Because.
Cause of that festival.
Because it's all tied up to the festival? Cause they had a fair amount of dorm facilities there, I don't, but you're pretty sure they're all full.
Yep.
Where are these dorms?
Uh, the old Marlboro College.
Yeah, but not where we are?
No, we're in the graduate college building, up in the town of Marwood, there was a college.
Right.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how long ago it was.
There's a curb by just after the school.
Okay.
The building on the right was a Marlboro College dorm. Right?
That's true.
Yes, yes.
Silver Skates Motels.
Before that, that's right.
I'm not sure if they occupied that in the summer.
I mean.
I mean, they, they do in, in the, in the winter, they rent.
Rent all kinds of stuff out.
Yeah, all sorts of stuff. Uh, to folks who are working, um, seasonal folks, not snow.
Well, what happened was when, when Marlboro College went under, these other people bought the place who were. Wh- whose plans and realities didn't seem to match very well. Um, and then the Marlboro Music Festival came in and bought it. With the idea that they would, they could maintain it, but they had to find other. Renters who would use it because they only use it basically in the summer. And, um. And I was saying, you know, a dorm, huh, where are their dorms? Well.
Would be nice, but no, anyway.
Okay, one other question, does Landmark have a smaller population in the summer?
Landmark, Landmark has summer programs also. I mean, it's possible, smaller, that I don't know.
Yeah, cause I was thinking if it was a lot smaller, they might have. Yeah, when some dorm space available.
When I did Salt Marsh Square work in Connecticut, I was, I was at Connecticut College, and they were mostly like summer camps for kids gone. And I was like, we're going to the shared showers, the place where we're staying.
But it's a place.
It is, yeah, it was a place that's true that.
Often has other nice facilities available as part of it, so. Anyway, just to.
Yeah, I will say that it's a little emotionally draining to do all these reference checks and hear about how fabulous these people are and get super excited about.
Yep, we just went through that with a potential summer intern. Came and visited the farm, that was great. Went home and thought about it, prayed. Decided he didn't wanna come. Um, anyway, so no action on this tonight, then it sounds like, just try to keep plugging away at it and, um. If something should come up again, it, I, I can't remember how many days for a special meeting, how many days ahead we. So if we needed to do something next week.
Okay.
I guess I'd do it in less than fifteen, twenty minutes that we've chatted about it tonight.
We breeders typically felt like, like, cause we've sometimes either create or sell halfway through the summer, I, I feel like I can hire them and have them start working, and then the board can vote on it, whatever our next meeting is.
Yeah, okay.
As long as that's okay with everyone here. These are short term.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, we had an executive session for hiring discussions on the agenda, but. We've done it without, so I don't think we need executive session for anything else.
I don't.
The A C D update. I don't know that I really have it, we're having an executive session meeting Friday at three, does. That's when it works for everyone else.
Is there stuff afoot or?
Just, we have a full board meeting next. So there was some thought on my part that maybe the executive board should meet with Michelle and have some idea of what she's gonna pop out with. Full board meeting and. It's, yeah, this is taking some, getting used to a little different style and whatever else, but. Um, other than that, I don't know that I really have much to update. Uh, Jill's party is tomorrow. Back to the home and. Back to home and get myself in, get up.
No, we're bringing that card with you tonight, did you? I never signed it.
It's in my car.
Is it?
Yeah, on my dashboard, I put, I left it on my dashboard.
You didn't seal the envelope yet?
Nope.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Quick updates, um, the ACD, there's like quite a lot of staff on leave right now due to various personal issues. Um, Emily is on maternity leave, so just from Chatty Mcclair, everybody stretched very, very thin. Um, may just be a little bit lean for a couple of months here before everybody sort of gets back on. But Michelle seems to be really on top of stuff right now. And I'm hearing she is all about accountability. She is going district by district around the state and really getting people.
How's that being received?
I haven't heard any pushback yet. We'll see.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I got not sorry, I'm sorry.
We got to sit next to her today, so it was nice meeting her.
Oh, Michelle? Nice.
We have the state.
Yeah, Heather gets some driving today.
Anyway, Jill's thing is tomorrow, yeah. So I'm going up for that. Not carefully before you open them actually meeting friend. For lunch ahead of time, you are going?
Please give her my best, I can't. Another commitment.
I will do that. Yep, they, uh, talked about who would want to talk or whatever, and I said, not me.
Oh.
I said, Vicky can do it, she's used to talking and not breaking down, whatever. Um, anyway, yeah, should be a good thing. And Jeff Barber, I will say, um, is done. And so last Friday, I think. Which I didn't know was definite or happening that soon. Jill, I think, is still slated to be around till the first of June, or maybe it's the end of June. Okay, monthly report on district activities.
Wasn't really another place to outright mention it, but anything important to just share that White River paid both of our outstanding invoices, so.
Oh, they paid both?
Yeah, the second one came last week.
This is a good thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jeff, for.
Oh, yeah.
Sending a letter.
Yeah.
Whether that is what made this happen or what.
Yeah, well done.
I, I, no. Um, yep. That's great. So that was how, how many thousand?
Twenty-five thousand. And I'll be submitting the final invoice and net agreements shortly, the last twelve five.
Oh, I saw it in it. Um, that's great. Anything else of note? I mean, there's a lot of note in this report.
As there always is. No question.
Anything else you want to highlight? I just, I wanted to just put it out there, thank you all, everyone.
Yes.
For the work on the plant sale and all the work in this report, but especially the work on the plant sale. Just felt great to feel like we had plenty of hands on deck and. Um, and Garrett, thank you for volunteering when you thought you weren't able to be there working.
Well, thank you too.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, that felt really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it, having Arrow and Nina show up was kind of a surprise, but yeah.
It was great.
Yeah, well, they were a big help, right?
Yeah.
And Mary.
Yeah.
Sitting, and anyone else? I hate to start mentioning names because I'm probably forgetting somebody. Um, Ned. Yeah.
No, that's.
Great to see people come out of the woodwork or wherever they come from.
And I'm liking on his thing. No, no, he was there earlier in the week.
No.
He was there for something, wasn't he?
He helped me organize trees after.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, we brought the dog and just kind of. I was organizing trees.
But he supported you during that week, so thank you, Barry.
Yeah. Um, so do we have any, just to wrap up with the plants, perennials you have home, that potential homes, I mean, I mean.
I have, um, a landowner who has stock grass on her property. We discussed doing a variety of things, one of which was planting plants. So the ones that she likes on the plant, hopefully tomorrow. Um, and I don't know if she do the ones she doesn't want, or if she'll see them and be like, wow, this is so cool, let's plant them all. I don't know. So, so, and we have blueberries for, for days, so.
Are there still some not at the original?
I have all, they moved them out, I think they needed this thing, they started moving all the stuff.
Because Andrea did ask if she could sell them, I was like, please, and she's like, how do I get, how do I get you guys paid? I was like, no, 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 you just sell them.
She told me she's been advertising people to like Zenilla or PayPal or whatever. Also, just take them.
That's what I said, I was like, no, you guys, the least we can do.
So, I don't know.
Day off too.
So I gave some away today, but, um, at all the tree planting, I was like, by the way, do you also want tree, uh, blueberries? But that didn't do it.
Do you have those in your truck too?
Yes, they're on the truck, people like to take some of them. Yeah.
I'm looking at the size of them because really the ones that I've planted over the years that I, I have to find some structure to go over my fledgling little plants or whatever, because the snow is just cremating. It's just, yeah. I've, I've got some that I planted two years ago that are still like this.
Any feedback on how we left the place?
I didn't hear anything negative. Um, yeah. Evan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Evan, just remarked as you guys were all visibly cleaning, it's like, looking good in here, something.
Okay.
Andrea told me that she, she thought we did a lot of this, so.
Okay.
Well, I was there, so.
Good.
Fair enough. And do we normally send her some kind of a?
Yeah.
Thank you or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to discuss potentially like a gift certificate or gift card or whatever you call it these days for them to go out to dinner or something of that nature, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If somebody has a specific suggestion, I can just make something up.
No, I can't, no, it's just that we should, some gestures.
Absolutely.
Some gestures in order. I mean, they've been wonderful.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, secretary's report, group minutes from April twenty-third, which Cory had shared with us. And I don't know if you're in the packet or not.
Yeah.
They are.
Um, I have made some corrections today. That's Heather was on there as both being here physically and on Zoom.
I think I was doing last.
Do we have to pay her double?
That's how I love that you were on Zoom.
Yeah.
That was my memory.
Yep.
Um, but one of the bullets, the last bullet under NRCS updates had said NRCS didn't use any replay Inflation Reduction Act for this. Hadn't used any IRA. So their funding doesn't seem threatened, and I correct that, or added for this grant. Because I think NRCS did have IRA funding. Um, under financial consultant proposal, there was a bullet, will share contact with the ACD. I consulted Cory and process out because that was not part of it.
So you've made all these changes already?
Yes.
Okay.
Look, whatever version was in Google Docs.
And I downloaded that as a PDF and I put it on the website and I upload it to District's Drive folder that you all have access to. And then so I'll put it to NRCC maintains our list of all these things. So that the supervisor union reps can diligently review all the meeting minutes and keep up on things. Other spare time.
Are we supposed to do that?
Well, I mean, you already know about everything about our district, so you just need to review a lot of creatures.
I didn't know.
Really?
I was never given any game plan for what it meant to be a rep. To show up at the meeting.
I might have a Sarah Denzel creation, and she was like, hey, we should do this.
It's entirely possible, agree. Um, under the BACD update, I just made a correction to Jeff, the spelling of Jeff Barber's last name. And also there was some reference, um, that talks about Michelle's work in Montpelier or something. Um, and I think there was something about more than Jill or something, and I removed the more than Jill. It's, I thought the key thing was that Michelle's been in Montpelier a lot. Um, I think that was it. So. If someone's comfortable making a motion to include these minutes with the corrections that were made today.
So moved second.
Any other discussion, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Upcoming meetings, so I don't know what it is about dates that we pick. I potentially had a conflict tonight with a grandson's concert. The concert got delayed to the night of our next meeting. June eleventh. Um, so I can just attend by Zoom and be late. Or we can change the meeting date.
June.
It's wild turtle week. It's wild. Wild turtle week, that's all I have.
So.
Love it.
God out there.
Wild, what? Well, I, I did it in the wrong week, but I helped a snapping turtle across the road the other day.
Nice.
No, came down the road and there was this rather large snapping turtle.
They're very awkward when they're not in water.
Yes.
I was scared of it when I found the one in the fields, I was like, man, I don't want your closer.
But it was a snapping turtle?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would be too.
Which are aptly named.
They can do damage.
Yeah, and we do soil sample, yeah, we were soil sampling.
She had weapons.
The turtle.
Yeah, but it was also grabbing up to our knees and I was like, oh, and like, it was, it was awkward, but.
Well, if you grab them at the very back of the shell, they can't stretch that far.
I have a shovel.
And then this is the wood turtle that they also.
So it's big wildlife day. Yeah.
Also.
Yeah. While Jeff's looking for his calendar, I just want to say Abby and I were having some conversation this morning. I don't know if I was six, I don't know how it came about or what the context was, but she was talking about uh, paraphrasing basically how impressed she is with all of you guys and what our district is doing.
Oh, boy.
So.
Thank you, Danny.
Hey, all do amazing work.
She mentioned the leadership under which they're doing the work also.
Do you have an alternative date in mind, or do we want to stick with the eleventh?
And that's, yeah, that's.
Yeah, what's your status, Jeff? What are you playing this summer?
Um, midsummer livestream.
Oh, great. I know that.
Playing a fair.
Is this the ones that happen, uh?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Maybe any of those before, those are good.
Yeah, you have wings?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna. Uh, I'm also going to be snug with the joint, but, um, yes, I'm gonna have my clothes.
So, does the eleventh work for you, Jeff?
No. Uh, tenth would, twelfth would, thirteenth would.
I'm gonna say maybe not a Friday.
Friday, November thirteenth.
Good, I doubt it, it'll be eighteenth.
Or do Wednesdays not work for you?
Uh, no, not, not eleven, eighteen or twenty-five.
Would the Tuesday work for people?
Not for me, my brother's coming.
How about the Thursday?
Leave that.
This is the twelve.
Twelve, yeah. It is a burning hot farm.
Seven AM, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, but you won't be.
Offense of the day.
That way, just saying.
I'm usually up that early.
I was like, poison, pretty on zone, sure.
Um, yeah, I register my day early. That's not me, this is the twelfth, we're saying?
Uh, whatever the Thursday is, yeah.
We draw thunder on here. No, sorry, sorry. Sitting still, sorry. I guess, sorry, no.
Jeff, are you still good to host?
Yep.
Everyone's good with that?
Twelve.
Twelve.
And there's another month that something's messed up, but I'm not gonna deal with that tonight.
We can talk more about this at the next meeting, but I want to suggest that we at least consider skipping a July meeting. When I was hired, I was told that sometimes we skip meetings and it hasn't happened.
Yeah, you've, you've had so much stuff going on, Cory, that we, we just felt the need to check on you every month.
So Mary and I are talking about taking a longish trip in July.
Oh, where are you gonna go?
Atlantic Canada.
You're such a, I'm sitting, I'm like, whoa.
I'm gonna gamble for two weeks.
Um, so it, another reason it's great that Arrow's coming on board is in order for that to be possible, certain things have to be able to be offloaded to somebody else, and so. Yes, between that and the work of the financial consultant, we're gonna try to create similarly like clear structured procedures for how payroll gets done without me.
Okay.
Currently, that's not possible. And that would make me sleep every night if I know that payroll can happen if I, I don't follow it all suddenly.
Right.
I would just suggest in the future, if we're going to skip a month, June would be a good month for me.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but yes, I mean, it, I don't know that we have to meet every month, so. If there's.
Something to consider.
Nothing pressing that. And, you know, whether that means we adjust just when and what we just did just one year, I mean, June, but whether we need it sooner in August or something. Okay. Anything else? Any future agenda items?
Probably work plans, hopefully for June. I'm a little bit done with this app, but that needs to happen.
Well, yes.
Yep. Have to plug into that spreadsheet and there used to be.
Anything else? Not motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, as always, for your excellent work. Guys are great.
Yes.